And we assemble across the road under the canopy outside Waitrose. Can I ask everyone, please, to switch their phones to silent or off? Members of the public, I would say as a committee we understand that matters under consideration tonight can be emotive, however, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee, and refrain from booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. Moving on to the main business, introductions. On my far right is Beth Howan Smith, the Development Control Manager, then Louise Yandel, who's the area team leader, Ruth Dovey, Principal Planning Officer, Kayleigh Taylor, Planning Officer, and then Barry Devlin, our planning lawyer. So without further ado, we'll move into the agenda. Item number one, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of October 2018, they have been on table for half an hour prior to the meeting, is it your wish I sign them as a true record?
Three.
Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence.
Chairman, we've got apologies from Councilor Christian Hesse.
Thank you. Item three, disclosure of interest, Emma.
None prior to the meeting, but I understand that Haysmere Town Councilors declare non pecuniary interest.
And Libby, sorry, Casper.
Thank you, Chairman, I'd like to declare a non pecunial interest with regard to item B1, the second application, as a member of the National Trust.
Ditto, I'm a member of the National Trust as well. Questions by members of the public, have we had any, Emma?
None received, Chairman.
Question from members, Emma?
None received.
Right. And then we move on to relevant updates, government guidance, legislation since the last meeting, Beth Howan Smith.
Thank you, Chairman, there are no updates.
Performance against government targets?
Thank you, Chairman.
Louise.
As you will see from page five of your agenda, we're performing excellently, both in terms of speed and quality, and there is little change from your update last month. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Applications for planning permission, if we need a site inspection, what have we got here on the agenda?
It will be arranged.
It will be arranged at a time to suit us later on. So, moving on now to the applications, A1, which is public speaking, WA 2017 1044, Chasemore, Portsmouth Road, Hineded, GU 266BZ. And to introduce this is Ruth, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This application is for the erection of 10 dwellings and associated works. Before I start the presentation, if I can just draw your attention to the fact there is a written update sheet, I've also got a couple of verbal updates, because if you take up your written update sheet, we have an amended reason for refusal five, under recommendation B, which refers to Wildon Heath's, the Wildon Heath's one special protection area, and it should refer to the Wildon Heath's two special protection area. On page 15 of your agenda, where the section 166 heads of terms are set out under the SPA contribution, there is reference to £12,406, and this should read as £15,502, and that's because the £15,502 figure is with inflation. So the £12,406 was set out in the Wildon Heath's strategy in 2011, but the £15,000 figure accounts for inflation since that time. And I have one final amendment, which relates to condition 14, which is on page 60 of the So just at the end of condition 14, it's just to add a sentence to say, "The development shall be carried out in accordance with the approved details." So turning now to the application itself, the application relates to a site that's 1.77 hectares in area, and is located on the northern side of the Portsmouth Road. The blue line on this site plan indicates a site that's in the applicant's ownership, and the red line is the application site. So the site is designated as countryside beyond the Greenbelt, AONB, AGLV, and is within the five kilometre buffer zone for Wildon Heath's phase one and two. And you can see from this site plan that you have Chasemore Corner, neighbouring property there, Chasemore Lodge here, and the lodge here, and they're the nearest neighbouring residential properties to the site. The field is currently accessed in this corner, and you go down an existing driveway along here to get access to it. So this aerial photograph provides you with a bit more context. So this square here is the application site, it's relatively flat, and it's surrounded by trees on each boundary. You can see the A3, the new A3 that runs along here, parallel to the site, and the A3 is screened by a relatively high fence, effectively. So since the rerouting of the A3, a number of dwellings have been approved along this section of the road, many of which are in East Hants District Council, and this site effectively comprises a break in development along the northern side of the Portsmouth There was a previous application on this site for 15 dwellings that was considered by the committee last year, and this got refused for a number of reasons, many of which do with insufficient detail relating to various aspects of development, but also because of the impact of the development on the AONB and the AGLV. So the site is close to the East Hampshire Borough boundary, and this map shows, this is the boundary along here, this is also the settlement boundary of Grayshot, and this map also shows you that the centre of Grayshot is located here. So the site is 250 metres away from the settlement boundary of Grayshot, and a mile away from the centre of Grayshot. So these are, ooh, sorry, going a bit too quickly, these are two views taken from outside of the site along the old Portsmouth Road, so you can see there's quite a significant amount of screening along that particular part. These photos show, are taken from within the site, so this is Chasemore Lodge, located in the corner here, this dwelling here is Chasemore Corner, which is that property And then these two photos, photo E is looking from the rear portion of the site towards the frontage with Portsmouth Road, which is here, and photo F is taken from towards the front of the site, looking back towards, effectively towards Chasemore, although you can see there's quite a lot of screening on the boundary, so you can't see that property. So this is the proposed block plan, proposed as for 10 residential dwellings, and these would be accessed using the existing access running down here. The dwellings would be set well back from the Portsmouth Road frontage, and generally set in from the site boundaries to varying degrees. There would be a leap and a lap located in the centre of the site, most of the trees on site are to be retained, and a substantial landscaping scheme has been proposed. All of the landscaping areas you see, so this large area of landscaping here, and the buffer areas around, would be under the auspices of a management company. There are three affordable housing units proposed on site, and they are units two, three, and four, and that's two one-bed units and one two-bed unit. And with regard to market housing, there are two two-bed units, three three-bed units, and two four-bed units. So the applicants provide an indicative landscaping scheme, so the sort of densely shaded olive areas around the edges are the existing trees, the brighter green here denotes proposed new trees, and the brown lines around each property is proposed hedging, but that is an indicative landscaping scheme. So turning now more to the detail, this is a floor plan and elevations of units three and four, and they are affordable one-bed units. This is a floor plan elevation of unit two, which is another affordable unit, and that's The next shows you unit seven, and that is a three-bedroom unit. And the next slide shows you unit 10, that's the largest unit on the site, and that's a five-bedroom unit. So this is the proposed street scene, so you can see from that that there would be limited views of the development from the Portsmouth Road, and that's largely on the basis of the existing screening, the proposed additional landscaping, and the fact that the dwellings have been set back approximately 54 metres from the Portsmouth Road frontage. These are some site sections, so the top one takes you from side boundary to side boundary of the site within the middle, and the bottom one takes you from front to back, and this is to give you some context, you can just see the Portsmouth Road here. So I mentioned before that last year we refused to plan the application for a 15-unit scheme, so this is a comparative block plan that shows you the scale of development that was proposed, in comparison to the scale of development that's now proposed, and you can see that one of the main differences is that development is set further back from the frontage, and also previously it was proposed to punch a new access through the frontage onto the Portsmouth Road, and the current proposal is to use the existing access, as I've already mentioned just here. So turning to matters of principle and technical opinion, I'll just touch on the key considerations. So officers have carefully assessed the impact on landscape character in the AONB and AGLV. So the AONB officer has objected on the grounds of the harmful impact of the development on the AONB. The photographs show the site is well screened from Portsmouth Road, and the development is set back well back from the frontage, and additional landscaping is proposed to further screen the development. In addition to this, the development utilises an existing access rather than creating a new access, which further decreases the impact on the AONB. So landscape visual impact assessment was submitted with the application that demonstrates that there would be limited views of the development from public vantage points. So officers have the view that development would not have a harmful impact on the AONB, on the AGLV. The site is located within 250 metres of the settlement boundary of Grayshot, and the centre of the village is a mile away, there are a number of shops and services within the village, and so officers are satisfied that the location of the development is acceptable. With regard to affordable housing, by providing three affordable housing units on site, the proposed development accords with the council's affordable housing policy that requires 30% provision. The dwellings, all of them, including the affordable, comply with the nationally described space standards, and officers consider they're all acceptable with regard to floor space, light, outlook, and privacy, and a leap and lap are also proposed in accordance with our standards. So the affordable housing mix has been, one has been suggested by our affordable housing team, so they are happy with the housing mix proposed, and regarding the market housing mix, this doesn't entirely accord with our schmarr, but it's very difficult to get it to accord with our schmarr because of the low number of units on the site. It is as close as it can possibly be, given that fact. In terms of highways and car parking, Surrey County Council have raised no objection, the existing access would need to be widened slightly to accommodate sightlines, the development accords with the car parking standards in terms of the level of provision, so in that respect the development is considered acceptable. You will have seen from the report that it is proposed that a contribution is made towards a mitigation package for the SPA, because the site is just outside the 400-metre buffer zone for the Wildon Heath two SPA, but having regard to the mitigation package, Natural England raise no objection to the development on those grounds, and that would be incorporated into a section 166 agreement. And with regard to residential amenity, I have indicated where the nearest residential dwellings are, adjacent to the site, and officers consider that the distances are sufficient to ensure that there would be no loss of light, outlook, or privacy to those neighbouring dwellings. And finally, just in terms of infrastructure contributions, there'd be contributions towards recycling containers, an SPA contribution, I've touched upon, an education contribution, and a contribution to playing pitch improvements at Hineded playing fields. So, subject to the contents of the report, the update sheet, and my oral update, officers are recommending approval of the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Ruth. Now we turn to public speaking, I call on Mr Baneard Smith, the objector. You have four minutes left from when you start talking, after three and a half minutes you'll hear a beep to warn you that four minutes is approaching.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Edward Banyal Smith, and I appear on behalf of the objectors to this application. There are numerous reasons why this application should be rejected, but time constraints only limit me really to two of those, so here we go. As your planning officer's report identifies, the site's planning history is a material consideration which you do need to take into account when you consider this application. This site has been rejected for development by this local planning authority on no less than six different occasions. It's been rejected as unsuitable for inclusion in the strategic housing land availability assessment on two occasions, in 2015, an application for 44 houses was rejected, I think by this committee, perhaps by officers, I may be corrected on that, in 2016, a similar application which we've gone through earlier, for 15 or 16 houses, was rejected, I think, by this committee. In February 2018, this year, it failed to appear as a strategic site in the local plan part one, and in May this year, only six months ago, this site was marked as unsuitable for development on the basis that it was too far away from the settlement boundary as part of Waverley's latest land allocation. This authority has repeatedly rejected development from this site, and as far as I'm concerned, nothing has changed in the intervening period, it's still much the same site. As I mentioned earlier, this application site has been marked as unsuitable for development in the latest land application, allocation rather, on the basis that it is more than 100 metres away from the settlement boundary. It has been suggested that you should nevertheless accept the scheme because it's within a mile of Grayshot, but that flies in the face of the site's planning history, it has also, has already been rejected, both within Schlar and also within particular applications, because development would lead to isolation of these dwellings, there'll be a gap, if you like, between Grayshot and these dwellings. I think your officer in the planning report has recommended that you might disregard this aspect, the planning history, on the basis that the planning inspector gave approval to the Whitegate scheme, which is nearby, in 2015, but that was an entirely different matter, and I'd encourage you to disregard that if you can. It was judged against different rules, it was decided in 2015, before the introduction of the local plan part one, and it related to three houses rather than 10 houses, so as I said actually, you don't need to follow this decision, it's not a relevant consideration. What is a material consideration is that the site is located in an area of outstanding natural beauty, that's an area designated by a statutory body, it's also, as your officer kindly pointed out, an area of great landscape value, it joins what's close to the Wildon Heath phase two SPA, and it joins a site of special scientific interest, and policy RE3 in Waverley's local plan part one states that protecting the AONB will be a priority. Your officer's report quite properly identifies that great weight should be placed on the views of the AONB responsible, so I think it's informative to look at what the AONB officer's said about this. And here I quote, the AONB officer has said, "The principle of developing a large site for housing would be inherently contrary to national and local planning policies to conserve the natural landscape and scenic beauty of the AONB. Merely reducing the number of dwellings," which is what we're doing here, "does not overcome that principle." I don't think the AONB officer could have been any more firm about his opinions. Your planning officer's briefing has also failed to identify, and it's not really criticism, there is only so much space, that the Waverley Borough Council as a public body has a statutory duty under section 85 of the Countryside and Right of Way Act to have due regard to conserving and enhancing the natural beauty of an area of outstanding natural beauty, and I'll encourage you to bear that in mind. As a public body, you are bound by your duties under statute, and you must pay due regard to the local plan by virtue of its statutory status. This requires you to prioritise the AONB designation and give great weight to the views of the AONB officer. In conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, you are at risk here of setting a rather unfortunate precedent, one where the provisions are statute are to some degree disregarded. Okay? Is that over and out?
If you could just, final sentence.
By all means, okay. It's a precedent where the local plan is disregarded almost as soon as you have prepared it, and one where the borough stated planning of policy is effectively disregarded, I'm sorry, so sorry for overrunning.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Banyal Smith. I call on Michael Connelly, supporter of the scheme. Mr Connelly, you have four minutes from when you start.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the planning committee. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak on this scheme. What I'd like to do initially is just run through the items which were raised by the objector, and make comment on them. Firstly, there have only been two applications for housing schemes on this site. Secondly, there have been some significant changes since the application for the 15-unit scheme. The scheme before you does not constitute major development, whereas the scheme before did, and therefore comments by the AONB officer, which may have been relevant for the larger scheme, are not relevant for this. This is actually confirmed in the National Planning Policy Framework, the July edition which was issued after the application was made, which confirmed this, which said, and this was based on case law which came out before this time, that planning permission shall be refused for major development, this is not a major development, other than in exceptional circumstances, and then followed it up with a brief description of what major and minor developments are. And it actually says, for the purposes of paragraphs 172 and 173 of the MPPF, whether a proposal as a major development is a matter for the decision-maker, taking into account its nature, scale, and setting, and whether it could have a significant diverse impact on the purposes which the area had been designated or defined. Now quite clearly, the scheme is set well back from its boundaries, is heavily screened, but most importantly, when this area was designated as AONB, it was part of a much broader area, this has now been sliced in two, or rather sliced into 99 and 1% left, and this is the last remaining vestige of the AONB, and it's been severely downgraded from when it was first designated. That, coupled with the fact that this is no longer a major development, make it acceptable development in the AONB. Also, comments were made about the White Gates development, no longer being considered isolated now, there are very clear case law on this, the distance that this development is away from Grayshot, which is only 250 metres from the defined settlement zone, certainly does not constitute an isolated development. The judge that actually wrote the case law on this actually cited the Latin term insula, meaning island. This cannot be considered as an island, this is in a developed frontage where the neighbouring borough has allowed developments along the whole of the frontage. It's not limited infilling, but it certainly cannot be considered isolated. That is my lot. Oh, can I just say one last thing? That it appeared from what the objectors are saying that there have been objections from a lot of statutory bodies, can I say that no objections have been raised to this scheme by Natural England, the National Trust, South Downs National Park, Surrey Highways, Surrey Wildlife Trust, the Lead Local Flood Authority, Thames Water, the Environment Agency, Waverley Environmental Health, Waverley Waste and Recycling, the County Archaeologists, the council's housing strategy and enabling manager for affordable housing, or the council arboretralist. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Connelly. Members, shorter, councillor Mullner.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a matter which reminds us all that we're here to apply the planning balance, and we have to weigh up benefits and harms, and I for one have always taken any impact on the AONB very seriously indeed. Equally, the AONB has to be looked at, not as something which is a complete constant, but which does vary in quality. And it's very hard to disagree with the supporters' comments that the new A3, together with its charming two-metre-high close-boarded fencing, and the scenic signs, one in blue, one in green, urbanise that area quite considerably. And it is impressive that there is so much screening on the development side of the Portsmouth Road, which I'm very glad to see is proposed to be maintained. I would certainly have been far more impressed by arguments about insularity, if it had not been, as you drive down that road, to see the large volume of new housing, which East Hants District Council have seen fit to approve, I do appreciate it's somewhat nearer to Grayshot than this, but the overall effect is that you've got, I think it's about 10 houses, very visible to Portsmouth Road as you drive down it, and then in fact, once you go past Kingsford Firs, you then have this sort of row of trees through which you will see very little indeed. So in terms of the planning balance, the adverse impact of this development is quite hard to see. I'm also reminded that when we last had this, this site before us for the 15-house scheme, we did actually drop a number of hints to the developer that if he could see his way to following our advice, he might get a better answer. And I have to say, I think it's, the developer is to be congratulated for having apparently taken that advice on board in every material particular. So, thinking about it, looking at the site, and having driven up it, driven up and down the Portsmouth Road several times, yes, the AONB is something you always take importantly as an important factor, but the planning balance, to me, given the need for housing, the wish actually to have smaller developments which infill, if you wish to use that word, rather than taking large chunks of completely virgin AONB where no A3 can be seen for miles, this seems to me a clear example where the planning balance is tilted in favour of saying yes, and I shall be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you very much. Who's coming next? Councillor Knowles.
Thank you very much, Chairman, I agree with much of what councillor Mullner has just said. It's just a point of clarification or amazement indeed, and it's only been raised by the officer's update which drew my attention to the item on page 49, which says the payment for the Hineded avoidance strategy will be £15,502, and I think the officer said it was £12,000 before. This is in line with inflation, well that's 30%. As a meagre pensioner, I can tell you that there's not been any 30% increases in inflation, unless we're using false figures like the government do when they increase something, rather than they give you something, so could somebody explain how inflation is suddenly
Thank you, Chair. That figure was actually calculated by the National Trust using some indexation model, but I have to confess I'm no expert in, but that was the figure that they came out at, having used that.
Didn't you mention 2010, 2011, sorry?
Yeah, so it's on the basis that the Wildon Heath mitigation strategy was drawn up in 2011, and so using the figures that are currently in that, the 2011 figures, you would get to the figure of 12,406. So obviously we're now at 2018, so it is accounting for the inflation that has occurred between 2011 and 2018, effectively.
Councillor Mullner, I think you'd like to come back.
Perhaps help, that 30%, which I agree sounds an awful lot and is an awful lot, but over seven years it's 1.8%, it's 3.8% compound. If it's the RPI plus a bit extra for the National Trust, you can see how they could get there. I imagine some rounding up was happening too.
If I could, just to comment, at some years it was running at 0.75, so how they got to that is quite clear, and perhaps the officer should just look and check that a false figure hasn't been slipped in.
Yeah, we have to accept the figure, I think, on this one. Ruth, I just wonder if you put the aerial view, the photograph that you had earlier... Ruth, I just wonder if you put the aerial view, the photograph that you had earlier in the discussion. That's it, thank you. councillor Edwards.
Thank you, chairman. I have a problem with this application. It's in the AONB, and I know councillor Mullner has said we've got the new A3, which is one of the reasons that we should allow this application. The old A3 fronts right onto the property, and the new A3 is an improvement on the landscape. You know, so I live in the area, as you well know, and to use the fact that East Hans has allowed development along, stripped development along that road, you don't know the reasons why they allowed the development. They were in the curtilages of existing properties in every single case, and they were unable to oppose that development, even though local councillors were against it. We talk about balance here. Now, I understand we need houses. The AONB has been designated for a purpose, to protect that area. This is not in any way improving the situation in any respect. I'd like to know what the exceptional circumstances are required by the NPPF to allow this development to go ahead. It's not in Local Plan Part One, as we heard from the objector. It's not in Local Plan Part Two consultation, which will be coming forward shortly. I do not understand how we can allow the AONB to be impacted in this way. You've heard from the AONB officer. You've heard from the local council, you've heard from Greyshot Parish Council. I know they're not in Waverley, but the situation is unacceptable. We must protect the environment. I will add at this stage that it needs very, very important reasons to disrespect the AONB designation, and I really can't support this application, I'm sorry.
Noted. Do you want to come back at this point? I'll take councillor Adams first.
Well, councillor Edwards has dealt with one of the questions I was going to ask, which is, is it in Part Two? A site recommended in Part Two? And he said, no, it isn't. But also, as far as I'm aware, Hazelmeir have already identified all their required sites for housing to meet their allocation. So again, that seems to me that this is an unnecessary development.
I think councillor Mullner can answer that one.
First thing, just to cover a point councillor Edwards made, the important thing about exceptional circumstances, you need them when you're proposing major development, and this is definitely not major development. So that particular argument doesn't really hold water. As far as LPP2 is concerned, I think we're in a state of limbo because a list was proposed, but it's now basically been withdrawn. And I think one of the issues which we're grappling with is how many of the sites which were put forward most recently, which attempted to take out the purest of the AONB sites quite deliberately, but that was done on the basis of a slight increase in the windfall numbers. Now, this development would count as one of those windfall contributions, which actually serve a very good purpose, in that they reduce the pressure on having to put pure AONB sites into the... And I appreciate this is in the AONB, but councillor Edwards perhaps did not mention that the old A3 did not have quite the same degree of fencing or infrastructure around it. The new A3, which serves a very important purpose, and none of us are arguing about its need, is nonetheless a much more significant sever of the countryside on the other side than, and from the site. So it's a point, but it's not one that weighs much with me. Now, I think we're in a position where we will find out in about a year's time what the LPP2 list for the Hazelmeir area is, and we're rather hoping by then there'll have been sufficient windfall developments, that the most sensitive sites will not have to be used. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to come back at this point, Ruth? No?
Councillor Edwards wants to come back.
And round.
Thank you, chairman. Just going back to the A3, there was traffic going up and down that road 24 hours a day. Now, councillor Mullner obviously didn't go down there, didn't see that. I used to live very, very close to the old A3, so I know what I'm talking about. And to say it wasn't impacting on that, you know, is madness, in my opinion, and incorrect. And I just thought I'd like to make that quite clear. Thank you.
I think it's a very different road now. councillor
Thank you, chairman. It is a very different road, and I think it's much better than it was. I remember the old A3. I have friends who live pretty near this, and I agree, it's quite well filled in to the north. Can I ask a question? Could we go to the picture of the layout of the houses on the site, the diagram? And that'll do fine, thank you very much. It shows to the top of that picture, which you presume is to the east of the site, quite a large area of, well, not part of the plots. It's trees, that's it, that bit, which presumably will be maintained, or they propose it will be maintained by the management company set up to do that sort of thing. And would it be publicly accessible? Will the local residents benefit from getting access to this, what is frankly at the moment a rather boring field? I joined the site visit the last time we could consider this, and I would consider, as illustrated there, the provision of an area of land with trees on it and open to the public would be an improvement. Is that the case?
It would be up to the applicant whether that would be public open space. I've understood that it wouldn't necessarily, but it would be up to the applicant to have that accessible by the public if needs be.
Please, Mr Connelly.
All right. Did I hear that? Anyway, interesting. I must say, it does not appear on the plans to provide obvious access for the residents only. I'm sure they could get on to it, but there seem to be a lot of hedges there. And if it were to be publicly accessible, I think that would be a definite improvement. I must say, in terms of AONB, does the O stand for outstanding? It does, doesn't it? I don't agree. It's in my personal view, it's a boring field that's made rather prettier by very good screening around it, and I would be happy for it to be developed. I do live not too far away, by the way. Thank you.
Four miles away, I think, roughly.
Mr Chairman, the section 106 agreement, which will relate to the management company which will maintain these areas, will not contain any provisions whereby the developer will prohibit occupants of the dwelling houses on site from having access to those areas.
Fine, thank you very much indeed, Dan Barry. Can we move to the recommendation then, members? The recommendation A, that subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal arrangement by the 21st of May 2019, secure provision of contributions to education, infrastructure contribution to playing field, pitches, contribution to recycling containers, SBA contributions and welcome packs, SUDS management and maintenance, open space management and maintenance, provision of leaps and laps and subject to conditions 1 to 20 with the amended condition 14, and informative 1 to 15 as set out in the agenda report, an amendment, amended condition 21 and the additional condition 22 as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Thank you very much. Those against?
One.
Abstentions?
One.
Thank you very much indeed. Recommendation B, that in the event... I'll find it in a minute.
Comments of...
Recommendation B, that in the event that the requirements for recommendation A are not met, permission B refused. Those in favour, please show.
Yeah, unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Planning permission is granted. Move on to the... Remarkably well behaved.
Thank you, chairman. This application has been brought before the area committee as the applicant is Waverley Borough Council. The application site is located to the south-east of Bacon Lane and is adjacent to the north-western corner of Frenchham Great Pond. The site forms part of Frenchham Common. This slide shows an aerial photograph of the site, which comprises car parking provision and a small visitor centre. Photograph A shows the entrance to the site, which comprises hard-surfaced access road. The car park has an informal permeable surface as shown in photographs B and C. The parking spaces are currently undefined. This slide shows the existing visitor centre in photographs A and B. This comprises a small cafe with serving hatch, ranger facilities and a small exhibition space. Photograph C shows the view from this building to the beach area of the pond. I'm firstly going to present the changes to the car park. This slide shows the proposed block plan. Part of the first row of parking to the east of the site, just here, will be removed and returned to Heathland. This is to reduce the glare of wind screens when viewed from the wider area. The car park would be reconfigured to increase the parking provision from 500 spaces to 514 spaces. The surface treatment would remain unaltered, but the spaces would be marked by vertical wooden posts with white painted tips, as shown on this slide. There would also be eight pay and display machines across the site. Whilst these would constitute inappropriate green belt development, the applicant has demonstrated very special circumstances, that these would ensure efficient use of the car park and mitigate overspill of vehicles onto surrounding roads. The ticket machines would reduce the length of queues of vehicles in the summer entering the site. To the north-east of the site, here, the existing visitor centre would be demolished and replaced by two buildings. These would be considered appropriate green belt development as they would constitute appropriate facilities of outdoor recreation, as long as they preserve the openness of the green belt and do not conflict with the purposes of including land within it. The building to the west would comprise a cafe and toilets with indoor and outdoor seating. The building to the east would comprise the ranger's office and facilities, a workshop and a meeting room. There would also be a mezzanine floor to provide storage. The buildings would be linked by a flat roof over part of the proposed store, just here. And the store would be enclosed by fencing and gates shown here. This slide shows the proposed elevations. You can see that the buildings would have a modest height, they would have timber weather boarding and gable zinc roofs. It's therefore considered that the proposal would have an appropriate design and would preserve the openness of the green belt. There would be solar panels installed facing south on the flat roof element of the store. Given the positioning of these between the buildings, it's considered that they would not appear unduly prominent within the landscape. This slide shows the proposed fencing around the store, just here and here. It's considered that this would be of an acceptable design and appearance. The matters of principle and technical opinion are: the area of historic landscape value and archaeology. As outlined in the agenda report, the council's conservation officer and the county council archaeologist are satisfied that the proposal would not result in material harm to heritage assets, subject to condition four. The impact on highways and parking provision. The use of wooden posts would help prevent inconsiderate parking and improve the efficiency of the car park. The county highway authority have no objection to the proposal, subject to a condition requiring a construction management plan. This is included as condition three on the agenda report. The impact on the public right of way. The proposal would not result in any alteration to the public right of way. Flooding and drainage. Please guide draw members' attention to the update sheet. The Surrey County Council Lead Local Flood Authority have raised no objection, subject to conditions detailed on the update sheet. Returning to the presentation, the effect on the SVAs. The site is adjacent to a triple SSI and it is within the SVA and SAC. An appropriate assessment has therefore been undertaken, which has been reviewed by Natural England. Natural England raised no objection, subject to conditions seven and eight, requiring a construction environmental management plan and for the toilets to be connected to the main sewerage system. Biodiversity. Surrey Wildlife Trust raised no objection to the proposal, subject to condition five and six, requiring a reptile mitigation strategy and restrictions on external lighting. Sustainability. The proposal aims for the buildings to be carbon neutral. The matters of judgment which members are asked to consider tonight are: the rural economy. Officers consider that the proposal would improve the quality of the facilities on the site and support the existing leisure use of the site. The impact on visual amenity and landscape character. It's considered that the proposal would have an acceptable design, and the Surrey Hills AONB adviser has been consulted on the application and is in support of the proposal. The impact on residential amenity. There are no immediate neighbouring dwellings to the application site. The impact on the green belt. As previously explained, officers consider that the buildings would constitute appropriate green belt development in accordance with the local plan and NPPF. However, the proposed posts marking the parking bays and the proposed ticket machines would not meet any of the exception criteria of the NPPF, and as such, would constitute inappropriate green belt development. Members are therefore asked to make an assessment whether the very special circumstances, that these will improve the efficiency of parking within the site and prevent overspill of vehicles outside the site, would outweigh the harm to the green belt and any other harm. The recommendation... The recommendation is that permission be granted as set out in the update sheet. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Kayleigh. councillor Round.
Sorry, but I've got... I'm the portfolio holder for economic development in the borough. I just want to make it clear, or be advised whether I need to express a non-procurnary interest in this before we start the debate. I'm sorry.
I think as your portfolio holder, I would say just to carry a non-procurnary interest as your portfolio holder, you haven't got a procurnary interest in it, so just a non-procurnary interest, which I'll make a note of now.
councillor Round.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have a number of points. Firstly, I congratulate councillor Edwards that when he was in charge, I think, of parking policy, we did have car parks such as the one in Hesmer, where you can get out of your car without banging the one next to you because of the way it's a herringbone pattern or something like that. I would hope the same was done here. I would also hope the white posts are not in a position where the local garages will reap a lot of business from repairing bent wings. I've suffered from these before. Posts between cars are nightmare. They'll be too low to see and you'll go into them. Also, can we please have wider parking spaces than we currently have in commercial or retail area car parks? Because you may not have noticed, but cars are much fatter than they used to be, like people, but I don't suppose there's any connection. They really are too narrow in many places across the nation. Next point: ticket machines imply we're going to have to pay to park here. I think that's appalling. This is a country area, people go there to enjoy the place. The last thing we want to see, it appears, is by being a grubby authority who's out for every last shekel we can extort from our residents. I don't think you have to pay to park there now. Certainly I didn't when I went there, but it was in an off period.
You do in the summer.
Do in the summer. What a shame. Okay, I've said my bid on the parking. If wider spaces were to reduce the number of car parking spaces, as obviously they would, I would like to know whether at times the present number proves to be too small and is there a lot of pressure to park there. There might be, perhaps it could be extended, but anyway, moving on. The existing building, I know, is rather overbearing and, dare I say it, ugly. I hope the new buildings will show a little bit more flair and even be of an iconic, interesting appearance, because I think this is an area which is going to cost quite a lot of money to do all this. Perhaps it's not a planning material consideration, the cost, but if this is, the proposal which I remember from budget papers was going to cost a significant, several hundred thousand pounds, then I would want to see a more exciting building than the ones proposed here. Also, I'm afraid, much as the ranger does an excellent job, I wouldn't put his house in the prime position. The prime position, overlooking the lake with wonderful views, where the existing building is, should be for the public's enjoyment. I'm sorry to say this to the ranger, but his house can be put anywhere. This is not a development to suit him or her. Also, the restaurant appears to be rather small. Okay, there's outside tables and okay, it'll be used mainly in the summer, but there's only five tables inside. So, having said all that, I am very disappointed that this is all that is proposed for a wonderful site and one of the jewel sites within the borough, and I think we could do better. I hate it. Thank you.
councillor King.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I entirely agree with councillor Round about the posts in the car park. I must admit, they are a menace. Number of times I've bashed them, I know we shouldn't have done, but I'm not happy about those, and they also clutter up the scene. But that said, the issues of car parking in the summer on the local roads have been absolutely disastrous and very, very adverse effect on the residents in the area. We've had to have the police out, we've had to set up a freeway and people still take no notice. Parking management definitely needs to happen. I think one point, I can't agree entirely with councillor Round, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I am now, I have to remember that this land is owned by the National Trust, not by Waverley. It is owned by the National Trust and we manage it on their behalf, and therefore they are the people who agreed the design. Thank you.
councillor Adams.
Yes, in support of councillor King, this is not the first design that was proposed. This is a design which has been evolved, really, from what was proposed some time ago and through several evolutions, and as councillor King said, it had to be acceptable to the National Trust. So that's why it has developed to this extent. Yes, I mean, the car parking issue is one. I'm not sure whether the posts are the best solution or whether in fact, in view of what councillor Round said, we could have stone, round stones along, sections of stone along the, where the, between the parking spaces instead of the posts. But obviously the posts would be a lot cheaper than that. No, I think this is a great advantage to everybody. I think it's taken a lot of time to, by the officers and by the relevant councillors, to get it to this state, and I'm really pleased to see that it's come forward to this committee today. I think everybody will be pleased for the new buildings to be put in place. As far as parking is concerned, yes, I mean, in the summer, when it's hot and there's plenty of people around, Bacon Lane still gets full of cars, even though it's a rural clearway. The police are reluctant to come out and do something, but we do eventually get them to come out and stick fine notices on the cars that are parked along there. They then move over to park on the other side near the entrance, the little pond, which then jams up that road and residents can't get out of their houses. And in fact, this summer, they were actually parking on both sides down the 287, over the double-yellow lines. So, our problem is not a lack of parking spaces, I'm sorry, a surplus of parking spaces. Our problem is an overuse of the area by people coming and not being able to park anywhere sensible. So, I don't know how that should occur, how we would restrict that, but this is the best we can do, I think, at the moment. Thank you.
Louise, do you want to come in at this point?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify on a couple of points on the car parking, although there is 500 spaces existing on-site at present, because they aren't marked in any way, what happens is people come along and park, and then someone will come along and park next to them and leave a metre or more between them. So, in effect, what happens is that the car park is full up with much less cars than could actually be accommodated. Just to respond to a couple of other points, the posts, they would be right at the back of the car parking space, so effectively they wouldn't obstruct people pulling in and out of the car parking space. They have been positioned in a sensitive location, so hopefully people won't be bumping in and out of them. And in relation to the width of the spaces, they would be 2.4 metres wide, which is in line with current standards, which does meet the requirements for modern cars. Just as a comparison, downstairs here, our car parking spaces are actually smaller than that, so this would take into consideration, you know, modern existing cars. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Louise. councillor Parker.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just like to ask the officers, I can't find anything in the papers, about what the difference is in the area of the existing buildings and the proposed, bearing in mind this is an area of AONB.
Kayleigh, can you...
Could you give us a minute?
We'll give you a minute, yes. In the meantime, we'll take councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this is a vast, going to be a vast improvement on what exists. It's been needed for a number of years. I use this area quite heavily with my grandchildren in the summer, and we need, we do need to sort it out. I must congratulate the officers, they've done their very best. This is, as we said, not the first design. It was, we hope, from a much more modern design, a much more consumer-friendly design, but unfortunately, we are governed by the National Trust, basically, and we have to comply with their wishes. This is a super-development and it's going to attract a lot of people into the area. Now, I've been there in the summer and there's been over 2,000 people on that site, believe it or not. It's a very popular destination and we need to ensure that when people visit the borough, they have a good experience and they enjoy the facilities available, the best facilities available, and this is the best we can do at the present time, and I fully support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Monna.
Thank you, Chairman. On the issue of car parking designation, I can just pass on what I experienced myself at Lecock, which is a National Trust village, and there the car parks are distinguished by short lengths of wood placed on the ground along the length of the thing. They don't, there's nothing for you to bang anything into, and they seem to work perfectly well, so possibly that might be taken on board, rather than vertical posts, which are of course a bit more intrusive. But everyone seemed to be able to focus on keeping their wheels between these guides and it was fine. Can I just ask, how much do you pay to park there in the summer at the moment?
Louise.
Unfortunately, I have no idea and the car parking charges wouldn't be a matter for the planning committee. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, right. And is the problem that at the moment, people have to pay for their ticket at the visitors' centre?
There's a man on the gate.
Oh, right. So this would be avoid his sort of cycle time causing blockages. I understand. Thank you.
Just make the observation that the National Trust car park at the Devil's Punchbowl is a quarter the size of this car park, and they get an awful lot of people visiting there. And I think, from memory, their latest charge for an all-day ticket is six pounds, I think. So, what they're going to charge, that's nothing to do with the planning application, nothing to do with planning whatsoever, but...
councillor Monna, you want to come back? No? Okay. councillor Knowles.
Thank you. Whilst we don't want to bang on about the car parks charges, there was a point the officers made that the posts and the charging machines don't fit in with the green belt, so we've got to find a good reason. Of course, if the charges are high, that could explain everybody parking on the roads. So that is a matter that we need to consider now, is, because I think at Hinded, it's three pounds for five minutes. Now, if that's the case, thank goodness, because doesn't it make Waverley look cheap? But, the question is now, are these proposals going to force people out to park all along the roads? And is that why perhaps they're already there? Because the reason given, the exceptional reason that they'd be okay, would be to keep people off the roads. There's a good argument, it forces people to park on the roads rather than pay the charge. Now, that's something we need to consider. No, no, I understand that, vice-chairman, but the reason given doesn't, doesn't fit.
Sorry, councillor Knowles, I didn't mean to root. I could just see the conversation brewing up, and I don't want a conversation on charges because that isn't a pliable matter. I don't mean that the issue can't be raised, but we don't reply to each other.
councillor Round. And just looking at the web, Frenchham Great Pond Car Park, all vehicles, four pounds.
Thank you. I don't want to prolong the discussion, obviously, but can I just ask, do National Trust members park free? Oh, good. I was a member, I'll rejoin now. But again, on parking, someone said that at the moment, it's not regularised and therefore people park, you know, a long distance away from each other. That's because, that's what common sense tells them you need to do. And if you're there in the summer with kids and grandkids in the back, with pushchairs, prams, carry-cots, whatever, you certainly would never get them out if you parked in an ordinary car park, and people need that kind of distance. Now, you could do it by parking... Chevron, thank you, the expert on my left, who did it well in the High Street car park in Hesmer, let's repeat the same sort of thing here. Lastly, on the posts. Years ago, I used a garage, when I first had a Volvo, near Woking, and he did make a lot of money from the car park posts that were at the station that people hit every time. If they're shorter than three feet or whatever, you can't see them. Please don't have posts... When you said the rear of the parking space, Louise, is that assuming you're going in front first? So the rear is at the rear of your car if you go in front first?
No, apologies, I've assumed that you're reversing into the space, so the posts are at the back of the space. If you're driving in front first, you would see them as you came in at the back end. If you're reversing in, they would again be at the back end, right at the back of the space.
So my fears are unfounded, it would be difficult to catch them with your bodywork.
I would, I'm sure it's not impossible, but I would hope with the normal care and attention that most people take when parking their vehicles in a car park, that the majority of the population would be able to avoid the posts. If you just look at this image up on the screen now, you can see the posts, they're right at the back, so...
Yes, but which way did he drive in, is what I'm thinking.
He's reversed into the space.
Well, the guy on the right, that implies his nose is up against the hedge, and he went in forwards, that diagram. But without flogging the detail forever, can I say I'm sure the parking can be sorted out? If you do it Chevron style, it'd be good. Do bear in mind, these are holidaymakers, they're not shoppers.
Right, councillor Edwards.
And the point that someone made about if there's congestion on the roads, it probably is because people don't like paying to park, particularly on leisure activity. May also repeat the point I made earlier, no one else has picked up on. My point, not being unkind to the ranger, but his house having prime position on the lake edge.
It's not ours, it's an office.
Oh, it's an office, right, but the public don't use it?
Could, Louise, I think you're stuck in here, please.
I would like to swap it with the other building, so that the bit the public use...
No, we are talking about an application, we can't change the application. You either vote for it or against it. Louise.
Just to clarify, obviously councillor Richard has said we need to be assessing the application that's in front of us, but we do know why they have arranged the accommodation like that. The ranger's office is positioned at the front for health and safety reasons, so that when the ranger is in the office, he still has a good view of the beach in case there are anything, any dangerous activities taking on the beach, the ranger can be aware of them. So it has been thought through and that is the reason why the ranger's office is positioned there. Thank you.
And his boat and vehicle is right there as well. councillor Monna.
Thank you, Chairman. Picking up councillor Knowles' very correct point that we need to discuss very special circumstances. This appears, and perhaps Barry can confirm or not, one of the great abuses of the English language in planning law. Basically, if you want to grant permission, then whatever reasons you give constitute very special circumstances. The ordinary English meaning of the phrase seems to have been lost, and I think there's been some case law on that. The use of exceptional circumstances when discussing AONB for a major application is very much nearer the natural English meaning. But I understand that very special circumstances is just you found adequate reasons in the planning balance to justify ignoring green belt considerations. So you either do or you don't. Thank you.
councillor Coburn.
Sorry, Mr Chairman, yes.
Sorry, Barry.
That was a very succinct summation of the position on very exceptional circumstances. There's nothing in the NPPF to really direct members as to what a finding of very special circumstances should constitute, so it was really a finding of something that you deem appropriate to facilitate a particular development. I think it was a... I think there's a great deal of flexibility, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Counselor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. I really just wanted to ask the officers, I mean, I'm all for this development, I can't see that we've any reason to turn it down, but I do, like many others, have reservations about some of the detail of those posts, simply because I've seen better solutions. I mean, can we put in an informative that whereas we, you know, accept the need for paid parking and a better organisation of the parking, we wonder whether, you know, that the use of posts could be revisited or other solutions sought? Because I can't help thinking that Counselor Munner's, and certainly in Scotland, you never see posts, there's always just little markers on the ground, they last for centuries, whether, you know, we couldn't just pass it because we want to pass it, but just get a slightly better solution and save people's...
Louise.
Thank you, Chairman. As it is a small detail of the scheme, I would consider that we could put on a planning condition to say, notwithstanding the submitted drawings, full details for the demarcation of the proposed car parking spaces shall be submitted to and approved by the local planning authority. The parking spaces shall only be implemented in accordance with those approved details. Okay, I would suggest that that isn't in the condition itself, but if members consider that that is necessary, then we could consult Frenchham Parish Council when the details come in, but that would be up to members to determine. I would suggest a more efficient process maybe to consult the ward members.
It's the same thing, but, members, can we move to the recommendation then, please? Sorry, Libby. Counselor Piper.
I wondered whether I could have a response to the footprint of the properties, the proposed and the existing.
Thank you, Chairman. So on page 78 of the agenda report, it explains that the existing building on the site has a floor area of 122 metres squared, and the two replacement buildings would have a cumulative floor area of 214 metres squared. So whilst that is an increase of 92 metres squared, the height of the building wouldn't be increased. And it's also worth noting that the existing building on the site has particularly large eaves which overhang and there's existing hard standing. So on that basis, we have come to the conclusion that the proposed buildings would have an acceptable scale and form.
Thank you, members. Let's move to the recommendation. Recommendation, subject conditions, 1 to 10 informatives, 1 to 7 inclusive on the agenda report, and conditions 11 to 12, and informatives 8 to 10 inclusive on the update sheet, and the condition amendment that Louise has just read out. Permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those against?
One.
Substances?
Two.
Planning permission is therefore granted. Thank you, members. That concludes our meeting, but before we depart, this is Louise Yandell's last meeting with Sutton. She leaves us next month. I'd just like to say thank you for all your hard work in the southern and western area, Louise. Very much appreciated everything you've done. Thank you.